All right, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We're here for a couple bill hearings today. Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee, joined by Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District, Member of the Committee; Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District; Councilwoman Danny McCray, 2nd District, Member of the Committee; and Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District, Member of the Committee, as well as Councilman Mark Conway, 4th District. First up, oh, and we are joined by Marguerite Kern, Staff to the Committee, Nina Themelis on behalf of Mayor Brandon Scott. Everyone, okay. First up, Bill 22-0239, Sale of Property, 2001 Park Avenue. Law Department's favorable?
I can call the law department, but they do stand by their report in favor of us being favorable.
Prove for form and legal sufficiency. All right. Department of Planning, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Department of Transportation, no objection?
We stand by our bill report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. DHCD, favorable? Oh, yeah, that's right. They stick by their report?
Yes.
Department of Real Estate, favorable?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Yes, we stand by our report.
Thank you. Department of Finance, does not oppose?
Yes, we stand by our report. No objection.
Thank you. Parking Authority of Baltimore City, does not oppose?
We do not oppose.
Thank you. And this will be sent to BOE for final approval. We've been joined by Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District, a member of the committee. Colleagues, are there any questions for the agencies, or is there a motion to move the bill favorably? Did anyone sign up to testify on this one publicly? All right. Excellent. Motion by Stokes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Middleton. Costello says yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Dorsey, absent. McCray?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer, absent. Stokes?
Yes.
This bill passes with five votes and moves to second reader at the next meeting of the City Council. Next up, Council Bill 22-0240, Sale of Property, 711 North Arlington Avenue. Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency. They stand by their report?
Yes.
Excellent. Department of Planning, favorable?
Mr. Chair, yes. Planning has one comment for, or clarification, actually. So, at the time of the drafting of our memo, it appeared that the intent was for the sale of the entire parcel, but it's more recently come to our understanding that the intent is actually to only sell a portion of the parcel directly adjacent to the nursing home facility. So, it appears that a subdivision application is going to be needed to actually to create the piece of real estate that the city is interested in disposing of, which is an important distinction for the bill itself, because as the bill is currently read, it describes the entire parcel. So, I guess the first question is if that can be confirmed, that the intent, I don't know if someone from DCD is here, the intent is to sell only a portion of the parcel? And if that is the case, then Planning would likely recommend that the subdivision application be made, and at the very least, the required survey be done describing specifically the piece of real estate that the city intends to sell. That is clear, Mr. Chair?
So, I don't know how to answer that. Do we have anyone from? Casey?
So, I can't really speak to if it needs to be amended, but I will say that Wrenken Parks has agreed to sell this portion, and the subdivision will be a condition of the sale, and the purchaser is aware that they will need to subdivide the property.
Okay, so do we need to amend this, or no?
No.
You're good with that?
Yeah, and Planning still is in support of the sale of this portion of the property.
Okay. Got it. DHCD, favorable? Nina, I assume they stand by their report?
Yes.
Excellent. Department of Transportation, no objection?
Mr. Chair, we stand by our bill report.
Real Estate, favorable?
Mr. Chair, yes, favorable.
Department of Finance, does not oppose?
No objection.
Parking Authority of Baltimore City, doesn't oppose?
Yes, we stand by our report. Do not oppose.
Thank you. And this will be sent to BOE for final approval. Is there a motion to move the bill favorably? Actually, first, is there any public testimony on this one? Seeing that there's none, is there a motion to move the bill favorably?
So moved.
Motion by Middleton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Burnett. Costello's yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Dorsey, absent. McCray?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer, absent. Stokes?
Yes.
This bill passes 5-0 with two absences and moves to second reader at the next meeting of the City Council. All right. Next up is budget overview hearings. Council Bill 22-0235, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2022, Also, Mayor and City Council Resolution 22-0237, Operating Budget for the Board of School Commissioners for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2023. And this is the budget overview with BCPS. So, we've got BBMR and BCPS. Bob, take it away.
Bob Senby from the Department of Finance. I'm here to provide an overview of the fiscal 2023 budget. This is the kickoff to Council's review of the 2023 budget. This is meant to be an overview. Obviously, we have the hearings starting next week where we'll get into much more detail on agencies, so this is pretty high level. Most of you have seen in our briefings some version of this presentation. There's not much that's different from the preliminary budget that was released back in April. So, we'll go through this again, and happy to take any questions at the end from council members. So, first, it's not letting me click, Marguerite. Am I? Yep, it's working. Thank you. So, first, the agenda for presentation today. First, we'll just go through a quick overview. Next, we'll get into the general fund. We'll look at revenues and fixed cost on the expenditure side. Then, we'll dive further into the key budget recommendations by pillar, and then we'll wrap up by talking about other funding sources, capital grants and utility funds. So, first, just an overview. There were really three questions we had to ask ourselves this year as we started building the 23 budget. I think we have answers to all these questions now, too. You know, one was what is the COVID economy going to look like? And it looks really very strong, actually. You know, we had a significant disruption in fiscal '21, but our economy in '22 has been really strong. We expect that to continue in fiscal '23. Second question was how are we going to pay for KIRWIN? The answer to that is partly with the answer to number one, which is our economy did approve, improve, and our revenue picture has improved significantly, but there's also new EMS revenues that we're factoring into this year's budget, which we'll get to later. And third is what will federal aid look like? And the answer to that is federal aid from CARES and FEMA. CARES is gone. FEMA is likely going away soon. And so, now, in this budget, we're shifting more onto some of the strategic investments via ARPA, which we'll discuss. In terms of just some key highlights, you know, first, there's this new revenue stream to support EMS services, which we'll go into more detail in a moment. We're funding the last stage of the ERP project. We're funding operating costs for the new Cherry Hill Fitness and Wellness Center, which opens this year. We're adding funding to support Monzy's GBRS, the Gun, Group Violence Reduction Strategy. And then, we're funding a variety of enhancements through all of the pillars, which we'll show you in more detail later. Before we go on to the numbers for fiscal '23, just want to clarify again what is in and what is not in the 23 budget. So, CARES Act is expired. We had to spend all that money by last December. That's gone. There's no CARES Act money in the fiscal '23 budget. FEMA support is still available to us, but there is no FEMA money in the fiscal '23 budget. We expect those funds to go away at some point during fiscal 2023. We will still pursue it as long as we possibly can, but we're not planning for it in the fiscal '23 budget. And then, ARPA, the city received, of course, this award, a direct award of $641 million. We appropriated all of that in the fiscal 2022 budget, and by law, that money, if it's unspent, since it's grant money, carries forward if unspent from year to year. So, our choice last year was put all the money in the budget so we could get started on it. We'll continue to carry that forward from year to year. You won't see new ARPA money in fiscal '23 in any of the documents. We do have some exhibits, just to give you an update on where the ARPA funding is to date. And the one that's in our executive summary budget document is this one, which summarizes the funding that has been awarded so far from ARPA. This isn't what has been spent. This is just what has been awarded to agencies or projects. I know Council's having the hearings with the ARPA team directly on all this, so we're not going to go into too much detail, but this is what had been allocated at the time that the 23 budget was approved by the Board of Estimates. Again, total of $481 million committed so far out of the $641 million award. For the fiscal '23 budget itself, what we're talking about today, the operating plan is recommended at $3.3 billion. Capital plan is recommended at $792.6 million. I did want to note that the capital plan, that is significantly more than what we've communicated at the preliminary budget that we released. That's because we got a lot of state aid, especially on capital projects. When the session ended, we did not know that when we made the preliminary budget available in early April, but a lot more information we got at the end of the session, and we'll talk about some of that good news a little bit later. On the general fund budget alone, $2.147 billion general fund budget and 9,474 positions. The budget, the percentage increase you see there, 6.9%, that's mostly because we are making available some one-time funds for capital projects out of the general fund. If you take that out of the equation, the growth is about 2.8% year over year for the general fund. In terms of general fund, how we got from '22 to '23, this is just a little bit more detail on the math on both the revenue and expenditure side. You'll first notice that at the bottom, under that adjustments, we took out $52 million that was in the '22 budget for CARES and FEMA, because again, that's not available anymore to us, or is not guaranteed to be available to us anymore in fiscal '23 like it was in '22. And then, you know, looking on the left, you'll see, you know, significant growth on all of our big revenue sources, property tax, income, highway user revenue, et cetera. We'll come back to that and show you some graphs on the trends on those. Then, on the expenditure side, you'll see that we had some, you know, significant growth in costs, you know, salary and benefit growth in costs, education, of course, for KIRWIN, general inflation, which has picked up quite a bit. You'll notice there's a negative $40 million for EMS revenue. Wanted to explain that here, why you see that. Essentially, what the fire department was able to do is they are entering the city into a program by which we get reimbursed for the cost of Medicaid-related transports. We have a lot of Medicaid-eligible patients in the city, and they're entering a program. It's called the Emergency Services Payment Provider Program. So, we applied, it's a federal program that's managed through the state. We applied to say, hey, we have a lot of Medicaid-eligible patients. We would like to seek reimbursement for that. It's estimated to be $40 million of additional revenue on an annual basis. Reason it shows up here is because we're currently paying for that, those costs, out of the general fund. This is a general fund savings, and so, we built that into the budget. This is one of the reasons we've been able to meet the first-year KIRWIN requirement. We did choose to turn around and spend five of that directly in EMS services, which we'll go through in more detail in a moment. We also, again, decided to fund some enhancements in other pillars, which we'll get to further in the presentation, but I just wanted to show you the math to show we had significant cost increases just to maintain current services, but fortunately, our revenue picture improved, and we have that new EMS revenue source. Going into detail on the general fund revenues, the makeup of our general fund budget really hasn't changed that much. There are no new taxes or fees in this year's budget, so, you know, nearly half of the revenue coming from property tax, 20% from income tax are the two largest sources. Sorry, my clicker is freezing on me. There we go. So, going into the revenue, first, I want to talk about real property tax, which is, you know, by far our largest revenue source. You can see here that this is our ninth straight year of assessment growth. What was reassessed for fiscal '23 is group one, so that dark gray box at the top is what was reassessed in advance of fiscal '23. You'll notice that reassessment as a whole is 6.6%. That's 6.6% on a triennial basis, so that's over three years. So, that averages out to a little bit over 2% per year. And on the next slide, sorry, Marguerite, my thing is not working, so you might have to advance me. So, the big story here for '23 is the disparity between residential properties and commercial properties. Commercial properties, you'll see, from '22 to '23 actually declined in value. Group one, even though it's that northern part of the city, there's a little chunk of the traditional central business district that gets reassessed, and you'll notice that of the 3,171 commercial properties that were reassessed, 1,484, nearly half of them, actually lost value. And again, I think that's for what I think is, should be obvious reasons at this point, that the downtown was really struggling. You had retail, you had hotels, you had, you know, a lot of commercial office-based buildings that were really struggling during the pandemic, so there was a loss of real estate value there. Good news is that the residential growth was greater than that. Of our 65,000 residential properties in group one, 54,000 actually increased in value, and some, you know, significantly so. So, the net of all of this is that we did have overall growth in property tax assessments for fiscal '23, which will lead to growth in real property tax receipts for next year. I'm sorry, it's not working, so you might need to...
Next slide.
Okay. Property tax revenue, as I mentioned, since we did have growth again in assessments, this will be, if it holds, our 10th straight year of real property tax growth. Remember that this is, real property tax forecast is based on the new assessments for group one, but we also phase in increases that we had for groups two and groups three, which were in the prior two fiscal years. Next slide is income tax. Sorry, I'm jumping ahead. 20 cents by 2020. Wanted to confirm here and just remind folks that we had planned a program over the last decade to get our property tax rate down by the equivalent of 20 cents for residential owner-occupied properties. We reached that goal in 2020. The reason I bring this up again every year is that we've maintained that since then, so that wasn't a one-time benefit for homeowners. Every year, our homeowners, the average homeowner for a middle, you know, kind of the middle property value, which is a little bit under $200,000, that taxpayer is getting savings of over $350 every year because of that program. And, you know, we have no intention of scaling this back. This is something that was a big priority of ours over the last decade, to get our tax rate, effective tax rate down as low as we possibly could. We chose not to extend this program this year because we were trying to deal with KIRWIN and other cost increases, but we will consider it in future years. Next slide, I think, is income tax. Yes. So, income tax, our projection for fiscal '23 is about 4.4% higher than our fiscal '22 projection, and, you know, income tax has been a good story throughout the pandemic. We really haven't seen an impact. Most of that is because there was, you know, so much federal aid to protect, you know, businesses, organizations, individuals from the impacts of the pandemic. And, you know, good news that we are seeing is that even though we've had declines in population, when we look at the state taxpayer data that they share with us in, kind of not raw data, but kind of group data by income, we actually had 1,400 more taxpayers in the 2020 tax return data than we did in 2019. So, you know, we're eager to see 2021, which is being processed now, to see if there's, you know, a continuation of that trend. We're not sure exactly why that happened in 2020. One theory is that a lot of people had to file returns to get access to some of the aid that was available because of the pandemic, so some of it could be a one-time thing, but we're hoping that that represents, you know, at least a slow, modest improvement of our tax base. And a lot of the improvement was in the range of 60,000 to 150,000 reported income, which is, you know, middle-class, solidly upper-middle-class for sure, which, you know, we think is a good sign, and we hope to see that continue. Next slide, tourism and visitor revenues. You know, you've heard this many times from me. We got crushed in '21. We're on the rebound. Our fiscal '23 budget, we're expecting to get those revenues, which is a combination of parking, hotel, admissions and amusement, and convention center income, back to 85% of pre-pandemic levels. Next slide, recordation and transfer. You can see the volatility in this source, the, kind of the light blue shade at the far right, that's the fiscal '22 projection. So, we're projecting $130 million of transfer and recordation receipts in fiscal 2022. In our latest data, we think we'll actually even be a little bit better than that. It's trending even higher than that, and, you know, the reason is there's just been extraordinary levels of activity in the housing market. You know, there was low interest rates, a lot of people looking to upgrade space, especially on the residential side, so there was a lot of movement. You'll notice that our budget for next year is much lower. Reason for that is that we don't want to over-rely on this money. You know, we've already seen the Federal Reserve, you know, bring interest rates up. Mortgage rates are now up to 5% to 6%, whereas even a year ago, you could borrow 30-year fix for like 3%. And, you know, we expect that that will lead to slower activity in this sector. We did take some of the surplus in 2022, and we actually budgeted it in the fiscal '23 capital budget, so we're going to spend a lot of that on one-time things, which I'll show you a little bit later in the presentation. Next slide, please. Highway user revenue, we're projecting $170 million of receipts in '23. We get our data from the State Department of Transportation, which is expecting additional growth in vehicle-related activity. We are kind of paying attention right now to two things. One is that, you know, with these higher gas prices that look like they're going to be around, that's probably going to lead to less, it should lead to less driving. You would think that that would lead to less of that activity. Second is there's still this debate at the state level about the gas tax, if there's going to be a holiday, or if they're going to try to waive that, or scale back the increase that's supposed to go into effect. There was a little bit of news about this yesterday. Gas tax is one of the sources that goes towards HUR and gets shared back with local jurisdictions. So, as of now, the gas tax is expected to automatically increase due to inflation. The General Assembly is basically saying we want to stick with that. There's a little bit of bickering between some of the other elected officials about trying to, you know, provide relief for, you know, taxpayers who pay this at the pump. But, so, we're keeping an eye on both of those things. Both of those could, if those happen, it could scale back our estimate for HUR. Next slide. The good news on HUR also, though, is, you know, we've had this, we had this history where we lost a bunch of money during the last recession, and we've only partially recovered, but the state did pass, the General Assembly did pass a bill that would bump up our share of HUR revenues. It's a total of about $300 million between fiscal '24 and '28 over a five-year period, which, you know, the lion's share of that is going to go directly to transportation infrastructure, which we're, you know, we're desperate for dollars for that source, of course. So, that's not in the fiscal '23 budget. That's, will be fiscal '24 to fiscal '28. Next slide is traffic cameras. You can see not much of a change in budget from '22 to '23. We are deploying a total of 30 new cameras, which will get us up to 160 total, but the average number of citations we're issuing per camera has consistently come down over the past couple of years. That was always expected. Driver behavior tends to, you know, improve slowly over time as people get used to the locations. We do put new cameras out, and so, there's usually a little bit of bump for those new locations, and then people get used to them, and you see the citations drop off. This is not the I-83 speed cameras, which I'll talk about momentarily. These are the ones that go directly to the general fund. They have to be within a certain radius of school facilities. Next slide, turning to the expenditure side of the budget, our fixed cost. So, first, our fixed costs as a percent of general fund revenues are up to 42.8% for fiscal '23. You know, the primary reason for that is the KIRWIN requirement. That is, we consider that a fixed cost, even though it's something that the city, you know, wanted to do, it's still something we don't have a choice in, so our fixed cost as a percent of our revenues is higher, which is something we need to keep an eye on. You'll see that the percentage came down and then is trending up just a little bit over the last couple of years, which we'll need to keep our eye on. Next slide on KIRWIN itself. So, the chart at the top shows the next eight years of what we're going to owe through 2030. I show that because, you know, even though we met the first-year requirement, our, you know, the hardship is not over. This is going to be some additional work for us to try to figure out how to fund this over the next eight years. The chart at the bottom gives you a little bit more perspective of the long haul and what we've contributed to education, and you can see from like fiscal '10 to fiscal '22, you know, the slope on that line was not very great. We have this huge increase, this big increase in fiscal '23, and then the slope through the rest of the decade is much higher than it was. So, again, you know, 5% growth on average for schools' contributions. I'm sure our colleagues here will spend it very well, but I just want to mention that that is a hardship still. We haven't solved the long-term KIRWIN problem. We got through the worst of it, I think, or the hardest part of it in the first year, but there's still work to do to make sure that we can keep up with those contributions over the next eight years. Next slide is pension contributions. Pension contributions are down in fiscal '23 by about $12 million. That's because both FNP and ERS systems had extraordinary investment return years in fiscal '21, which gets factored into the city's contribution for the next year. Both of the pension systems returned over 25% investment returns in 2021. Now, a lot of that has been given back because the returns so far this year have been really pretty ugly, but what that means is that when we got our actuarial report, which tells us how much we need to contribute into the system, it was actually a little bit lower than fiscal '22. You'll notice in the chart that that happens maybe once or twice a decade, so certainly can't count on that year to year, but it was a little bit of good news in '23 that helped us to meet some of the challenges we had in '23. Next slide, inflation. So, I wanted to end the fixed cost section by talking about inflation. This chart shows the history going back over a decade. The inflation right now is in the 7% to 8% range. I mentioned this because we did have to make an adjustment in the '23 budget to, you know, take all of our non-personnel spending line items, anything for contracts, material supplies, and just increase the budget on those because agencies are paying more for those materials and supplies and contracts because of the general inflation there. That's a cost to the city of $14.5 million. Again, we used 4.6% inflation. After looking at the current data, trying to look at a lot of the forecast of what's going to happen over the course of the next year, the consensus among a lot of the economic folks is that it's not going to stay as bad as it is now for too much longer, but we're still going to see higher than what we were used to. We were used to like 2%, 2.5%, but it seems like we're out of that at the moment, and we'll have to live with that for at least the short term. Next section, I wanted to go into the recommendations by pillar very quickly. So, the action plan, Mayor's Action Plan, a reminder that, you know, this was rolled out this year. We use this as the basis of our build of the budget. You can see that there are specific goals under each of those pillars. We tried to target our investments to things that would directly improve progress on those goals. Next slide, if you would, we relaunched our outcome budgeting process this year as well, which means that we basically just convened one team, including some members of the public, for each of the pillars, and gave them a budget and asked them to kind of look at the action plan and help us make budget decisions. Mayor really liked that process. It was, it worked really well, I think, this year, and I think we'll plan to continue it in future years. Next slide is youth. So, we'll go through pillar by pillar. So, on youth, we've already talked about the big increase in the first year to support city schools. I wanted to mention that in Wrenken Parks, we have the $41 million of ARPA funds that will be used towards capital projects, but there's also this additional $1.2 million in the budget for operating cost at that new Cherry Hill, you know, Middle Branch Fitness and Wellness Center. Next, going into public safety. So, we talked about this new EMS revenue source, $40 million, that's really supporting the general fund at large. We chose to spend $5 million of that directly back on EMS at We chose to spend $5 million of that directly back on EMS itself. EMS is, you know, a very important priority in the action plan. We're one of the busiest EMS services in the country, and we need help there. What we're investing in is two new BLS, Basic Life Support Units, you know, ambulance units on the street. We're adding some quality assurance staff and some other administrative and technical staff. And we're also piloting two, what I would call diversion-type programs. One is the, what I would call the, we're calling the 911 Nurse Triage Program, having a nurse in the 911 call center to triage and potentially do telehealth responses to folks that don't need a transport. And also what we're calling a population health initiative, which is just really what that means is just trying to get people to the source from the scene to the medical care that they need. Our, you know, EMS system, we kind of drop everybody off at the emergency room. That causes backlogs there and problems there. We're trying to kind of build a network so we can take people to other providers that can more give them the medical care they need. A lot of that being urgent care facilities playing a role in that process. Next, on public safety. We have some additional funding in the '23 budget for BPD to support the gun violence reduction strategy. If you remember, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement was awarded funds from ARPA to kick that off. We're adding positions in the police department to support that strategy, to make sure we have a holistic strategy that's covered from all angles, that we have a coordinated approach. And then we're adding 35 civilian positions. So BPD, you know, agreed to add 35 civilian positions and give up 30 sworn positions. It's roughly cost-neutral. And the idea here is that civilians can do some of the work on investigations. You know, we typically think of detectives as sworn officers, but civilians can do some of the work on those, kind of tracking down leads, interviewing witnesses, doing some of the paperwork. And again, all of this is to the purpose of trying to free up our sworn officers, which are in, you know, high demand right now and hard to hire to make sure that they're devoted to things like patrol, some of the core functions in police. Next is on public safety still. So reminder that starting in fiscal '23 is the first full year of our police recruitment initiative. In our latest contract with FOP, we agreed to a bunch of targeted pay increases for officers at the early levels, early parts of the pay scale, early parts of their career, as well as some incentive pay for education and patrol work, field training, and also hard-to-fill shifts, namely the overnight shift, which is harder to get volunteers for. The cost there will be partially offset by operational savings in overtime that the department identified for this year. And then here, also want to mention here, the I-83 traffic cameras, which is part of public safety. So DOT is testing, I guess you could say, the program now. People are getting notices of if they're speeding. They're not getting a ticket yet, I don't think. I think that goes into effect in June or July, but they're doing a 90-day test period. We've estimated the first-year revenues of $34.7 million. All of that, per the state law, has to go to improvements back on I-83. You know, warning on this, we talked to DOT over and over again about this estimate. It's really hard to figure out what's going to happen in the first year of a massive program like this when you've got, you know, a lot of people coming on that highway. We think we modeled it out about as best we could. If it's higher, that goes to DOT. If it's lower, that's just less money that goes towards I-83 improvements. And again, the idea here is not to, you know, use this money to support the general fund at large. The intent is to try to get people to slow down, improve the safety, and to use that money back on I-83. I should say there that the revenues also cover the administrative cost and the contract cost to run that program. Next up, on clean and healthy. So we are, you know, with CARES and FEMA expiring, the Health Department is shifting to ARPA funds to continue the response. So there was $80 million allocated to health from ARPA. 26.2 of that is scheduled for fiscal '23, and that's just to continue the COVID response, things like vaccination efforts, testing, contact tracing, you know, purchasing PPE if we need it. You know, as we've seen, there's been a couple kind of spikes over time that we'll need to stay on top of. So they will, they'll be doing a lot of the same work, but the funding source is shifting from CARES and FEMA. We'll shift to ARPA as soon as the FEMA money expires. And then the Clean Corps is a program that will be part of ARPA. We wanted to mention here, we're working on this program by which we would try to hire community members to help with our, you know, cleanliness efforts, you know, things like maintaining alleys, you know, emptying street trash cans, you know, working on vacant lots. This hasn't been formally announced yet, but this is coming soon. This is ARPA funds, this is not in the fiscal '23 budget. Next slide, in equitable neighborhood development. So there's $1.7 million of funding in housing to speed up our vacant property acquisition and disposition process. A lot of this was what came out of the vacant properties work group or task group or whatever they were calling it. So there is money, most of that money is going towards staffing as attorneys. I know Councilman Ramos, you had asked about that, that's that line item. There was 400 in the preliminary budget and 1.3 was added, of which most of that is staffing for the, to speed the process in the courts. There's also, in Live Baltimore, there is an enhancement that was awarded for them to develop an ad campaign. Our, you know, we've been doing some research with Live Baltimore. We think there are people in the region that would want to live in the city of Baltimore, and we're developing an ad campaign to reach out and try to target those folks, to get those folks to live or consider living in Baltimore City. Next slide. These two programs are also ARPA programs. Just to be clear, these are not new in the '23 budget, but I mention them because they dovetail nicely with some of the work we're already doing in this pillar. The one is the Buy Back the Block Program. Where Live Baltimore will use ARPA funds to provide some type of home buying incentive for renters on certain blocks. And the Wealth Building Initiative is part of this middle neighborhood strategy where we would put some money towards grants to kind of repair, you know, work on homes where there's a lot of deferred maintenance and work that's needed. So these were all part of the housing package that was announced of, out of ARPA. We wanted to mention it here because it does dovetail, I think, nicely with some of the other work we're doing on vacancies and other housing work. Next, under equitable neighborhood development is two internal services. One, MWBE Support Law is adding five positions to strengthen our efforts with minority and women-owned business development to improve compliance, to make sure that we're meeting the goals that are set on our contracts. And the Equity Law, we're adding two positions that will ensure that we can, you know, meet the terms of that law. We're supposed to be doing equity assessments, which the agencies have started to do. We're also supposed to be doing things on bill reports, kind of doing some analysis about how that affects equity. So we're putting two people towards it. What we really need is training. Frankly, the agencies are still a little bit, you know, a little bit confused about what they're supposed to do. So having two people in the Office of Civil Rights to drive that work is what will be funded with these two positions. Next slide, please. Under stewardship of city resources, so I mentioned $13.7 million to fund the last stage of the ERP project. There will be three new positions also in VSIT for cybersecurity. What we found, working with them over the last year, is that we don't get to all of the critical patches that are out there, you know, software patches that we need to kind of shore up our systems. And so to keep up with that volume, we're going to add three staff to that unit to make sure we stay fresh on those. And then finally, under stewardship on the next slide, we're adding some money in the Department of General Services, about $85,000 to track our energy usage better. You know, we have a lot of buildings that are kind of partially occupied because of the pandemic, trying to see if we can find savings from that. We think that will pay out easily within the first year to help us, you know, change settings if we see that a building is not being used. And then Cub salaries, this is important. I know there's a lot of, you know, pressure on organizations, businesses, and governments now to pay more because there's inflation out in the marketplace. There's a worker shortage. We're having a hard time hiring employees in a lot of areas that we've, I think, acknowledged in previous hearings. We decided to fund for $2 million a Cub salary study. So HR does a study of, did a study of all the positions in that bargaining unit. 752 of those positions would be impacted by this, finding this salary study. And basically, it would bump up salaries on top of the COLA that they'll get in the budget for classes where we found that there was just like mismatches between the market salary in the region and what we were paying. So the ones, the big ones were building inspectors, office assistants, and field supervisors, people supervising AFSCME employees as well, were the ones that were highlighted in the report. And I think somebody had asked for it, I think it might have been Councilman, that we sent over the full report to see, you know, which classes will be affected by that. Next slide. Other enhancements, I said there were some more sprinkled throughout the budget. We'll be reopening the visitor center in downtown in the Inner Harbor that had been closed because of COVID. We're funding a public markets point-of-sale system. This would be for vendors at some of our markets to give them a little bit better real-time data, to help them manage their menus and their staffing and their pricing. There's an additional position being added in planning that will be focused solely on options for better preparing the community for extreme weather events. We're adding funding in the fire department for an apprenticeship program. This will fund 15 high school interns and 10 cadet positions. Again, the idea being we want to have a nice pipeline between local high schools and city employment. And then we're adding $3 million in the capital budget to DOT for American with Disabilities compliance. So as you know, I think we were, there was a suit against the city that we are not compliant with that law. There's $3 million in the budget of the general fund to do that. We also got $10 million of state aid, which is one of the last-minute changes we made to the budget. So there's $13 million total to get started on that work. The universe of that work is over $600 million. There's no way we can do all of that, you know, over the course of even a decade. So we're trying to space it out and trying to prioritize important areas first. And then we also have $2.5 million of funding in the DOT budget as well that's meant to be a match for the new federal infrastructure bill. What we know that, at this point, what DOT has told us is that some of the money will go through existing formula programs that requires an 80/20 match, federal to local. So in order to access some of that additional money, we had to put a little bit more of our skin in the game to get access to those dollars. Those are the key enhancements. Next slide, moving to other fund sources. So just to wrap up, we wanted to talk quickly about capital grants and utilities. On the capital budget, if you look at the second to last column on the right, the dollar changed from '22 to '23. So there's $75.5 million more in pay-go general funds in '23 than '22. That's mostly coming from one-time sources. I'll come back to that in just a minute of what that's for. You'll notice that there's more funding for the conduit enterprise fund. Our agreement with BGE basically requires us to spend all of the money we bring in from fees on capital projects. In other words, we can't bring the money in and just have it sit in an account or use it in the general fund. So as per that agreement, we have to spend the money on capital improvements, which is why you see a ramp up in spending in the capital budget for fiscal '23. The federal grant increase is mostly because we're using a loan, a federal loan source for the Perkins Somerset Projects. That's why there's the big increase there. And the state budget is the increase of all the things we got at the last minute in the General Assembly session. So we got money for $10 million for fire stations, $10 million for police facilities. We got money for libraries, we got money for wrecking parks. We got money for economic development purposes. We got a whole host of things that is now in the state, is in the capital budget on the state's side. Happy to, you know, walk you guys through that in more detail. The capital folks will be here for, I think, on the first day. They will have more detail about all of those projects, but it was significant. This is the best General Assembly session I've seen in my career here, for sure. There was a lot of money available. And then the revenue loans, the revenue bonds under that section, that's the utility funds. As I've told you before, there's kind of a two-year cycle of when they borrow. And so this is, '23 will be one of the kind of peak cycles where they're borrowing additional money for water, wastewater, and stormwater. I wanted to come back to that $75 million in the general fund and talk about most of it on the next slide. So if you could, if you would, go to the next slide. So if you remember earlier, I had said we had this huge transfer and recordation surplus in fiscal '22. So on the left, we decided to take $30 million of that and put it towards capital. We also have about $5 million of general fund surplus from all those other sources that were strong in fiscal '22 that we felt comfortable putting towards capital. And then we're also getting a first-year payment from this EMS program we're in. So not only are we getting the recurring revenue, but we're actually in the program now and can apply to get reimbursed for Medicaid patients for this year's transports. We're expecting to get a check for that in June. That's, you know, about $35 million is what the estimate is now. So we decided to take all of that, and rather than wait around, we said, let's just put it in the '23 budget and let's, you know, let's spend it on capital projects where we have a dire need. What we had decided to do was to put 25 towards fire, 15 to public safety more broadly, and then 30 for other capital projects throughout the rest of the budget. The reason we put 25 towards fires is because they did a lot of the work to kind of get the EMS revenue, so we definitely wanted to reward them, and there's a strong need there. We haven't decided how to spend this money yet because of the news we got from the state that we got $10 million and $10 million respectively for fire and police facilities. So that changed our calculus a little bit. It's better, I mean, we're glad we got that money, but we were expecting to spend some of this money on fire facilities. We got the state money for those facilities, so that allows us to go back and potentially do either more stations or more repairs or other renovations. So we're still working on a detailed plan on that. The capital budget is kind of generic on that point because we hadn't decided, you know, facility by facility, what we wanted to do with that money yet. And then next, capital budget history. Just putting this in context, that yellow bar on the far right, that's the one-time money I'm talking about here, that's $70 million. You know, when we have a good year, our instinct is put that money back towards capital because that's where we need it. And you can see when you take the recurring commitments for our GEO bond and our county transportation bond, and we throw in the one-time money that's in the fiscal '23 budget, this is the highest capital investment we've had in almost 20 years. So, you know, you'll notice that there's other places where there's little yellow bars where we had some one-time resources, but this is, you know, probably the best, certainly the best that I've seen in my career here. So again, our instinct is let's not create a bunch of programs that we can't support on a recurring basis. Let's try to fix some of our infrastructure issues when we have additional funds like that. And then next slide, grant funding. Just listing some of the recurring sources of funds we get from either the state or federal budget. I'll highlight just a couple of these. Library services, a total of $15 million for the State Resource Center, which is the central, in the central part of downtown library. There's a $3 million recurring grant that we're getting now for hours that has been extended. That was the one that extended the hours into the weekends. You know, under sustainable transportation, we get money to support the circulator. Neighborhood safety, we have money supporting safe streets. Under the federal grant funding, what you're seeing there is, the first item is all of the money we get through continuum of care and some other programs for homeless support, CDVG block grant money, maternal and child health, and a whole host of other things. So the ones we're listing here are things we get pretty consistently on a recurring basis. And, you know, all that detail is in the agency detail book as well by agency. And then finally, last but not least, utility funds. You'll notice the utility fund cost, the budget for '23 is much lower. This is not a reduction of service. There was a refinancing that was done to retire some of our debt, so we have much lower debt service cost as a result of that in fiscal 2023. This is not a change in service, you know, all the things that we've talked about, you know, Water For All program and infrastructure improvements that are being done with borrowed funds are all accounted for here. So you'll see a pretty big decrease, but most of that is debt service. And DPW, of course, will be here, you know, next week to explain in a little bit more detail what's going on in the utilities. That is the overview in about as quickly as I think I can do it, and happy to take questions from the committee.
Thanks, Bob. I want to recognize Councilman Slife, who was just here, stepped out, member of the committee from the 5th District. We will be starting off with our council vice president. If you have any questions? No? Okay, I'm gonna go to the other side. Councilman Odet Ramos, you have any questions? Two questions. And we can come back, everybody gets you.
Okay, no problem. Mr. Chair, did you want to start with other committee members first? I'm not technically a committee member.
I'll just go to the other side.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple of questions about the surplus and our investment. In the, you don't have the book in front of you, but maybe you know it by heart. In the first book under DGS, page 154, it talks about a general funding for capital improvements of $44 million. Is that, that doesn't seem like that's the same pot of money.
Some of it is. So general services, you're looking at the agency detail, I think.
Correct.
Yeah, so general services- So general services gets some, you know, some GO bond money and some pay-go money. And if, if you remember on the slide for the one-time surplus, there was 30 million that we put back into other, we called other capital projects.
So you're putting some of that in there?
Some of it was going to DGS. The way we, we did that actually was when we identified this, this is about two months ago, you know, I basically went to, you know, mayor and said, look, we've got some money to spend. We actually gave it back to planning to go back and, you know, because they do a review process where they get requests, and they were able to fund most of what agencies had actually asked for this year. So some of it went back to general services for city facilities, things like.
That's great. Okay.
And some of it went to, you know, housing or BDC or, or other agencies. So that's what, you're seeing part of that is, is, is in there.
Yeah, because it's a huge jump. There was nothing in there last year.
Yeah.
So that's why I was wondering what that, what that was.
That's a lion's share.
And that would really be upgrades for the buildings.
Yes.
Probably some deferred maintenance that we've had for a long time.
Yes.
Sort of like now, let's just take care of that.
Yeah.
Okay. That makes, that makes total sense.
They'll, they'll have that at the hearing. Capital will be here next Tuesday with all the detail, if you, if you want to go into more detail on those projects.
Cool. Okay. And then my next question for now, you had said in the last budget overview, the 20 cents by 2022. Maybe I missed it, but today you just said that you're, that we're not doing it anymore, but I thought we were continuing.
I'm sorry. Yeah, to be clear, we, we're still continuing it in the '23 budget. We had, you know, we've talked about it internally. We decided not to, when I say continue, I guess I should have said, we decided not to expand it this year because we had these other cost increases that were coming.
Right. But you weren't gonna, I understood that. You were gonna keep it flat but not increase it.
Yeah, not increase it.
Right. Because we had also talked about, you know, the idea of trying to sort of clean up the database, if you will. And so I just wanted to make sure I was hearing you correctly, that we're not stopping the program.
Not stopping the program.
People will still get that little special credit. It's just not going to be increased.
That's right.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, anyone else?
Yep. I just got two quick questions. First, just going back to the conversation around Kerwin, you showed a chart with our estimated expenses going through 2030.
Councilman, in the, in the mic.
I'm sorry. You showed a chart with regard to Kerwin showing our expected expenses going through 2030, and I was just curious if that was inflation adjust, if it was inflation adjusted.
Those numbers are, those numbers are directly from DLS of what we will owe in those years, which are, I believe they are inflation adjusted to account for that.
And then tied to that question around inflation, does that, or should that change in any way, how we think about our spending? Of course, we're expecting to spend more, but should we be spending in other areas as a regard? Do we think about it that way?
Well, I guess the way, the way I think about it is with higher inflation, you know, we have to make adjustments to agencies' budgets just to be able to do the things they're doing now. So you will see increases, you know, in the agency detail on contractual services or materials or supplies, but a lot of that, we don't see that as like service improvements. That's just to be able to do the things they're already doing, to buy materials or to, you know, spend on contracts. So the number I cited here, the 14.5 million, that was, we applied that 4.6% rate to basically every non-personnel line item in the budget, I shouldn't say every, almost every non-personnel line item in the budget. We do a little bit different work on things like healthcare where the costs are a little bit different, but for most, for the most part, if we're seeing general inflation, we're going to see that across the board. So we bumped up, you know, those line items across the board. So I don't, I see that as just being able to maintain what we're already doing today. And that's, you know, kind of a fact of life when we're in this kind of inflationary environment. Does, does that answer what?
No, that makes sense. And just to make sure I understand what you're saying, so when I think about generally thinking about like the pay-go and our ability to take excess funds and put it towards capital projects, when we're looking at inflation impacting, impacting our overall operational expenses, it's going to hurt our pay-go.
It's, yeah, it is going to hurt our pay-go. I would think, you know, 30 million this year doesn't buy you as much as 30 million did last year or the year before. So that is, that is a good point. I know the capital folks have been, you know, talking to me about that. They're like, just a reminder that $80 million of GO bond doesn't get us the same as 80 million last year. So some of that additional funds, I think it's fair to say, is just going to go to inflation to kind of for the cost of, of capital projects. But I, but I do think there are, you know, there are definitely more projects on the pay-go capital side, just given the magnitude of the increase this year.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, anyone else?
I have one question.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You had mentioned, I know you've done briefings and there's something new in each time you do it, which I think is exciting. The Clean Corps you mentioned hasn't been announced yet. Was that, you said it was going to be ARPA funding?
That's right.
And I think the other pieces of ARPA funding you had already mentioned.
Yes.
But is that calculated in the 481 million in this chart? No?
The housing stuff is in the 481, the Clean Corps is not.
Okay. So, and we'll, I'm sure hear about that soon. So some of this, 1.5, I meant 159 million, that is outstanding, would be paying for that?
Yeah. Yeah, they're starting to plan, plan for that. And we'll, you know, we've talked to DPW just to be prepared to, to explain, but it hasn't been formally announced, but they've been talking to a lot of folks about that program.
Okay, great. And then back to the emergency medical services piece. In the agency detail, book one, page 131, you've mentioned that the 40 million that we're get, we usually pay for because we're not getting reimbursed is actually going to other things. But what I see here in the agency detail is sort of a shift from general to special.
Right.
And, but the special is staying in the EMS. So what is that? I mean, I have lots of questions throughout the book, but I'll just ask that.
Yeah. So think of it, we actually, I actually just got a call, off the call earlier today with fire, just making sure that they fully understand. Basically, before, before this ESPP program, we were getting EMS reimbursement. So we were getting some for Medicare, we were getting some from private, you know, private insurers, and a little bit, it was only $100 per transport for Medicaid, very little for Medicaid. So if you look at an EMS service in a previous year, you would see some special funding and you would see some general funding because the general fund was paying the majority of the cost. What, with this new EMS revenue, what we're basically doing is, the EMS service is not going away and it's getting better, all, almost all of the EMS service is going to be supported now by reimbursement.
Right.
So it really is a, it's a shift. It's taking the burden off the general fund. In the fire department budget, you'll see a huge decrease, I think it's 39, you know, point whatever, for a decrease in that, in that. And really, I see that as, we saw that as general fund savings. We didn't necessarily go back and say, fire, you can spend all this new 40 million. I mean, that was taking a burden off the city as a whole. But we, all of the EMS positions and the cost shows up now in the special fund, where we were receiving reimbursement before, if you look in prior years.
I see what you're saying. Okay. So, so, right. So it was going to be shifting because that's how they are going to be funded.
Yes.
And we can use this additional 40 million that is now falling from the side because the fire department isn't using it. We can use it elsewhere.
Yeah, exactly.
I just wanted to make sure I had the math.
Yeah. And it was before, prior years it was about 20 million of reimbursement. Now when you add this in, it's almost $60 million, and that's basically the cost of the, I mean, I think our general fund contribution this year for EMS is going to be less than a million dollars.
Like 700,000.
Yeah. It's very minimal.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
Councilman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm talking about Clean Corps, and I think my colleague, Councilman Burnett, been talking about these lots and DHCD and DPW, so it's glad to see. My question is, you said, it says targeted neighborhoods? Because I don't know what that is because there's a whole bunch of neighborhoods with lots need to be cleaned. So I don't know what targeted neighborhoods mean, and is there a budget for Clean Corps? Because I don't see that here.
Not, not yet, no. So there's nothing in the '23 budget. This is something that's being planned for, with ARPA funds.
So like, some of my community association, they actually have lots that they actually cut for the city? Will they be able to, to keep participating in this? And if there's not a community association that's not doing it, can they still apply to cut those lots? I know they, city pays them for each lot they cut. Would that still be part of this Clean Corps?
Yeah. So the, the idea of this is that they would be working, and again, we haven't decided all the specifics yet, but to, you know, in order to make some attempt to kind of tackle this, this cleanliness issue, that we would hire people in the neighborhood as kind of support for, for the core work that DPW does on some of the things that they struggle with or that they can't get to. So it could be things like trash cans, it could be things like lots. I mean, these are, these would be paid, you know, positions. We would be using ARPA funds to pay additional folks to support some of those cleaning activities in the, in the neighborhoods.
So my question is, is the city going to hire them? Suppose the community association already know those persons that live in the community that they can hire once they secure their contracts from the city? Couldn't that still be on the community instead of the city hiring them?
I, I can't say for sure about the mechanics of it at this point. I know it's just still being discussed what's the most efficient way to do it, so we're not sure quite yet.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, any other questions?
One last thing, Bob. We said, you, you should have been copied on all of them.
Yeah, the letters.
I think nine letters.
Yep.
Are we on track in terms of responses?
I, I believe we are. I've seen responses for some of them. I think a couple of them have already gone back. I know, I know for the finance one, we're almost on, ready to send it by end of this week. I haven't seen drafts yet of the other ones, but we've asked the agencies, I think they would do the 30, I think we said the 31st, right? Which is end of this week.
The housing one. You got the housing one.
Yeah, housing one was done. They're, they're supposed to respond back. We've asked them to respond back to MGR and BB Mar so we can look at them and get them over to the council. So they should be done by the end of the week unless we know anything different on those. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Just want to make sure we're on track because we'll, we'll need responses to, you know, everything that's outlined in there.
Right.
And certainly want to avoid having that hold things up, right?
Yep.
Okay. Great. Thank you. We are ready for, so we are now in recess for this one, and now mayor and city council resolution 22-0237, operating budget for the board of school commissioners for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023, budget overview, BCPS. And colleagues, just so everyone's aware, we actually asked, you know, city schools not to send Dr. Santalisis for this one. She'll be at our full hearing, and that's kind of standard protocol for the past couple of years. So that's why she's not here with us today.
Thank you very much. My name is Chris Doherty. I am the head of the finance office at City Schools. I'm joined today for the budget overview presentation by colleagues Dewana Starette and Melissa Chalmers-Broom. We're all very happy to be here. And like Mr. Seneme, there's a lot to cover in a, in an annual budget, but like Chair Costello said, a, an even fuller and deeper presentation will be given on June 2nd by Dr. Santalisis and many members of her team. This is a preview, if you will, albeit a bit shorter. Oh.
Just say next slide.
Sorry. Yeah. Next slide, please. Thank you. I'll move pretty fast through some of them, so thanks for the help. So at, at the most basic level, before we get into the numbers and the categories, for a school system, of course, the budget is, is and should be a reflection of what our, what our students need, and of course, what our communities want for their children. And we try very hard to look at it that way and not just update last year's budget with some new numbers. We, we have a very energetic and structured outreach process for our budget development process where we, we go to multiple community meetings held in January and February, which by which I mean there's still ample time for input into the budget, which is only just recently passed in this month. And, and those outreach groups include, they're all open to the public, certainly, any member of the public, but one of them focuses on multilingual families in particular, but is open to the public. Another is focused on youth engagement, the children, the students themselves and everyone else. Another one is focused on community partners, folks who are in the schools doing a wide range of activities. And all of those community budget development processes and engagements are in addition to the 160-some-odd school-specific budget development processes that we do. So we pride ourselves on actually, on the amount of input that we get from our school communities and our communities writ, writ large. And next one, please, ma'am. And every year is unique. Every budget development process is unique, and, and we wouldn't never suggest it isn't. This year in particular felt really different for us. There were an awful lot of things going on, all of which well-known to the council members. We, we're still very much dealing with COVID. That is a big, we're emerging from it, but it is certainly a defining characteristic of, of both the FY '22 school year and planning for the FY '23 school year. We, like Mr. Seneme mentioned, are recipients of a significant uptick, uptick in federal funding aimed at COVID, but all, health and safety, but also aimed at keeping kids safe and healthy in the classroom, but also then directly trying to address the significant potential learning loss that happens when, when children were out of the formal environment for so long. That's what the shorthand of R3 refers to. R3 is city schools project, which is shorthand for reconnect, restore, and reimagine, which is the way we're implementing a significant amount of our COVID and ARPA funds to, again, not just have masks and vaccines and testing, which are integral to, to the safety in our schools, but also aimed at the support for the children as they get back to something approaching normalcy. So all of those elements, including, we, we have a very strong equity lens at city schools, and again, the community input I mentioned, all of those were powerful vectors that were informing our attempts to put together the FY '23 budget. Thanks. And so what, what do our stu, what do our students need? Well, we don't think this list will be surprising, but, but they need to be seen as whole people, not just, not just test scores, not just kids to be kept track of. They need a safe and healthy in-person learning environment. They need individualized learning and support and extended and early learning opportunities. A little bit more on that later, but that emerged. They need preparation, explicit preparation for whatever their lives might hold after graduating from high school. They, they needed before and they need now in a COVID world and emerging from COVID, significant and accessible mental health supports with, you know, where they can get them and where they go. And of course, access to arts and access to activities that really excite them and make them excited to go to school above and beyond the, the books and the teachers, but like sports, but not just sports. It's drama clubs, it's other things, activities like that that get kids really even more excited about school. So back to our communities. We didn't go in a priori thinking we knew what all, all the answers were, so we, we engaged with the community. There were hundreds of in-person participants, and because there's not much that's been There were hundreds of in-person participants, and because there's not much that's been good with the COVID experience, but one small manifestation has been we are now much better at virtual meetings, and we get a lot more participation from folks that, because of work or travel or other, you know, caring for loved ones, that they couldn't physically get to an old-fashioned community meeting, but they can get into a virtual one. We have lots of survey mechanisms that we use. Some are kind of fill this out when you leave, some are an email, and others are text surveys, which are perhaps the most convenient for a large number of folks. It's meant to be quick and very easy to respond. We got over 6,000 of those about our budgets. And what emerged from all that? Well, there was a hint of it in a previous slide, but over and over, what those community groups shared with us is they wanted extended learning opportunities for their kids. They wanted accessible mental health supports across a wide variety of needs. They wanted more tutoring for all different subjects and all different needs. They wanted more attention paid to positive school culture and climate. They wanted arts enrichment, and they wanted more sports. These were the themes that emerged very clearly from all of those engagements. Next, please. A word on ESER, and ESER, the cares, the COVID-related funding. We have been using our ESER funding very energetically and on some of the things that you would imagine. At the same time, we've looked very hard at what is allowed under these funds, and they're relatively flexible funds by their very nature. And we've done, this is to highlight some of the things, not a comprehensive list, but for example, we've had bathroom renovations in 26 schools. We have renovated health suites in 21 schools. We have significantly upgraded our HVAC, heating, you know, heating and air conditioning systems. And we've created really improved, in some cases improved, and in some cases new, brand-new from scratch, outdoor areas, inviting outdoor areas for instruction and anything else that children and teachers would want both during the school day and after. Now, the reason these are highlighted is with the ESER funding, we absolutely have spent the bulk of the money on things like masks and barriers and testing and those types of things. But it isn't just creating a healthy learning environment. That's kind of the baseline. It's also striving to use these funds to, and this is part of the reimagine of those three Rs that I mentioned, is not just to try to get back to a status quo ante, but to get back to a better-than-status-quo ante. And we all know that if a school building doesn't have a functioning bathroom, or if it's not an inviting place, or it doesn't have anywhere outside that you can enjoy a beautiful day, that's something we need to address. And we have energetically been doing that with the more flexible-than-average cares, you know, cares and now ARP funding, you know, just basically COVID-related funding. And I think Mr. Seneme mentioned this, but there might be some differences in how the rest of the city. These funds are one-time funds. They're not one-year funds, but they're one-time funds. And so our goal, and we are on track to do that, is, of course, to utilize those ample, uncharacteristically ample federal funds and more flexible than normal so that we spend every penny. We spend every penny on things like this, and we're on track to do that. Next slide, please. Now, just to put a little bit of meat on the bones here, now, this is FY22, the year that we're in now, and we're almost 11/12ths of the way through. But to give more specifics rather than just more general statements, how we have been spending our Reconnect, Restore, Reimagine Fund, as of the date we ran this report, what exactly have we been spending them on? The bathroom upgrades that we mentioned, the health suites, the HVAC. Now, the HVAC, as we all learned, the air quality is a big issue, right? We all know how important HVAC is, and we've been very good over the last several years of decreasing significantly the number of buildings that don't have HVAC, specifically air conditioning systems. But at the same time, any building needs the purest and best air that it can get, so we're focusing on things that you may have heard of in other contexts, the MERV-13 filters in some instances, or standalone air purifiers if the HVAC system is not one you can just slap a MERV-13 filter into. Tutoring. We have really significantly amped up our tutoring, and this 13 and 1/2 million is just tutoring through partners, which is just one way to do tutoring. We gave per pupil amounts for arts, athletics, and enrichment, and this is, these are just examples. In our school approach, as you likely all know, it's highly decentralized, unlike certain systems. The building leader has a lot of autonomy at her building, the idea being that she knows best what's right for her school and her community. So we don't say, here's your arts enrichment program. We give the funds, in this case, to the principal, and she determines which mix of arts, athletics, and enrichment. That was over 12, almost 12 and 1/2 million dollars. We had instructional interventions. Extended learning, that was a big hit. Extended learning is hopefully just as the name implies, which is to say, learning that isn't in the normal, you know, 7:30 to 2:30 or 8 to 3-day. It's before school, it's after school, it's in the summer. It's whenever you, we can have more bites at the apple, more time with children, and it can take very different forms. Some schools have year-round schedules already, so they might implement it a different way. Others might jump on the summer programming. Others might want to extend their school day because it works better for them. But that, anytime you have extended days or additional instructional time, that costs money. So that's what we've been spending money on. Temporary employee support. Probably also heard that temporary employees can really help at a building level. They can be a Jack or Jill of all trades, doing a wide variety of things. Sometimes that leads to formal employment, and sometimes it's just the right person at the right time playing one or more roles for the direct benefit of kids and that school community. And we don't, the central office doesn't dictate how a school will use those temporary employees or how many. It's, we give them the budget, and they use them, and this is some of the ways we've been doing that. Next slide, please. The last slide was FY22, the year we're almost done with but not quite. And to give you an idea, the ESER COVID money is still in play, and what we're trying to do, hopefully straightforwardly, is things that we have found the schools have really appreciated and benefited from, we're just continuing or even doubling down on those things with those federal monies. The summer programming, for example, we're adding to it. It was something that people responded to, so we're putting more money into that. The tutoring, you saw it 13 and 1/2 in '22. We're nearly doubling it at '25. COVID testing, just, it's another one of the items. That hasn't gone away. We're still, and certainly with rates the way they are, no one has said we're out of the woods in that regard, so appropriately, a big amount of the COVID-generated funds are still going to the more traditional contact tracing, health and safety coordinators in every building, and really a nation-leading asymptomatic testing program. Not waiting until someone shows symptoms, but constantly testing to try to nip it in the bud even when those symptoms are manifesting. Technology is another big one. We learned very hard and very fast that all children need to have computers. When we went 100% virtual, they need computers that are usable and workable and robust, and they need the connectivity to connect that computer to their teachers and to the curriculum. So we're still spending appropriate amounts on technology and on software licenses. The next line is, when we do more virtually and do more with the computers, of course, nothing's free around here, so that's, software licenses are inching up as well. Still spending lots on PPE and mental health supports. That's just one contract. So that's kind of a sense of, it is obviously an accurate line item, but that's just one part of our overall mental health supports. Next, please. With Kerwin, and Mr. Seneme mentioned this, one thing that we're seeing, which I think is worth mentioning to this group, is funds that were under COVID funding coming from the central office are now going to be shifted to the schools. One thing that the Kerwin formula does is it really differentiates on a school-by-school level by looking at the exact population, the number of children in a school, the number of children who might be English learners, the number of children who might be receiving special education services, and sending out highly specific numbers, funding numbers to those schools. So with a shift like that, some of the things that we have talked about being super important to the schools, they will, starting in FY23 and then continuing in Kerwin, much of that will be budgeted for and spent at the school level. Because per Kerwin, the money goes to the schools, and that, there's, of course, a great logic to that, but more of the, more of the planning and executing of certain things that might have previously been done at a central level are going to be done at the school level. And that's another shift that Kerwin is bringing. Next one, please. Now, Kerwin. Mr. Seneme talked about it. We're still at the beginning of the Kerwin experience. FY23, from our point of view, is the first real year of Kerwin. You can find Kerwin-like spending in '22 and a little bit in '21. It's usually called Bridge to Kerwin, and it would be like under Concentrations of Poverty Grants. Those are Kerwin and Kerwin-like, but those were small compared to FY23. So FY23 really is the first "real" year, in quotes anyway, "real" year, where the funding has significantly increased. We are very grateful to have a year-on-year increase of about 16%. We're very appreciative of the city contribution going up about 15%. Those are massive increases compared to typical year-on-year increases that are usually inflation-like adjusted or close enough, but these are big, big increases, and we're very appreciative and very excited about those. At the same time, Kerwin comes with quite a bit of reporting requirements, and it is a new way of doing funding. As I mentioned, it's hyper-focused on a particular school's makeup of children. More schools, more children, more funding, more ELL children, more funding, more special ed services, more funding, and it's aimed at just that, saying not all schools are the same, and schools with more children need more money and as the like goes. At the same time, the funding comes in categories. There's another slide later, which we may get to, but if, for whatever reason, there isn't time, or, but the thing to remember is it is categorical spending. There's spending that comes for compensatory education. There's funding that comes for English learners. There's funding that comes for students receiving special education services. And it isn't, unlike the federal money that I mentioned that we're using, that I said was more flexible than normal. Kerwin funding is less flexible than normal, just to kind of continue that generalization. So we're delighted to be having the uptick in funding, but it's, you know, we're getting our sea legs with regard to exactly how it's going to be implemented. Next slide, please. We are, as you would hope, we're trying to build on the successes of FY21 and '22 as we go into FY23. Personalized learning is something that we've been doing and quite, we're going to build on it. College and career readiness has been one of our themes, and that is also a theme of Kerwin, which we're excited about. Student wholeness is something that we've been focused on in a very meaningful way. 85% of our schools now have an active, explicit student wholeness support team, not something that relatively recently happened at all. Early learning is another focus, both of the districts and of Kerwin. We're really getting a lot of good progress on building improvements. We have for years, but that's a key priority for us to put on this slide. And arts. We have been really focusing on increased arts access and teachers, and we continue to hire and put full-time arts positions in our schools. Next slide, please. Now, I'll probably go pretty quickly through these because it's just a bit more detail on some of what we were, we highlighted earlier, but it's, again, trying to put some meat on the bones and not just leave it at the general statement. We said that tutoring has been well-received, and we're increasing it. This is, the actual tutoring money is going from 16 and 1/2 million in this year to over 27 million. Tutoring can take different forms to different children, different people have different needs or desires for tutoring, but our approach is to give children the tutoring they need in significant doses. The term that we're using is high dosage evidence-based tutoring, not just a little cameos here and there, but significant amounts of really research-based tutoring, and we're very pleased with that, and we're putting our money where our mouth is. Next slide, please. Similarly, extended learning, not just hearing from the community, they wanted more of it. We're going from $28 million in this current year to over $42 million for extended learning. That's, it can take different shapes at different schools, but again, we're putting our money where our mouth is. Next slide, please. Arts enrichment, similarly. Arts enrichment and athletics going from almost 33 million to almost 40 million. Again, it's a category of, it's got different things in this category, but as it should. One school might have a robust sports program, but really want to spend this money on arts or drama club or photography club, or you name it, just anything that is enrichment and that that school has shown, not just shown, it's not incumbent upon a school to ask for something before they get it, but they have a desire for it either already or in finding out what kinds of things can be done. Next slide, please. College and career readiness. I'll be very quick on this, only because this is a pillar of work that we have done, and it's also an explicit call-out in the Kerwin funding. This first FY23 year of Kerwin funding, it's been a modest amount of money, frankly, but it's going to ramp up in out-years, and it will dovetail very well with what we already have in play. Next slide, please. Mental health supports. We have, this slide doesn't show it, but since FY20, we have increased our mental health supports by 17%. And so from FY22 to FY23, it's more modest. I think it's about 4%, you know, 2 and 1/2 million delta or over, 2 million delta over 47. At the same time, that's up from previous years fairly considerably. And this is, it takes the form of school psychologists, it takes the form of social workers, one in every building. It also takes the form of contractual services that we have that are flexible to meet kids where they are, both literally and figuratively, with mental health supports from a wide range of local expert providers in that space. And so we have a multitude of options to try to reach kids who need one or more and different types of mental health supports. Next slide, please. Sports and athletics. That's certainly a big one. We, now, this is, sports was called out specifically by folks in our groups. We're counting it in under arts enrichment and athletics, but it's like the flip side of, some schools will have lots of arts enrichment, but maybe they need more funding for sports teams. And this isn't just the, this isn't meant to be, nor is the intention, that it's only for varsity sports or sports that play other schools, which is a part of it, but intramural sports, just getting lots more children engaged in sports activities. And like anything, it costs money, and we are increasing the funding accordingly. Next, please.
I like that picture.
What's that?
I say I like the picture, Dumb or Poet.
Thank you. We like that one, too. School culture and climate. Now, this one, we put this on, it was one of the themes that came out in our outreach groups, and we're being consistent, and we're showing that from almost 7 million in FY22 to just under 6 million in school culture and climate. So that is, on its face, it's a decrease of almost a million dollars, or about a million dollars, rather. The reason for this decrease, though, is actually in FY22, we sent $10,000 per school to create school culture and climate teams at the school level. And that was a significant investment per school to get where they didn't exist before, but to take a look very directly at their school culture and climate and how it might be improved and the school could be made even more hospitable and welcoming place for all of its students. Those funds were one-time funds, and a lot of the, with Kerwin money going out to the schools, buildings will have significant amount of funds to apply towards school climate. It's not always clear from the school budget in advance exactly how they'll spend the money. So this, although from the central level, this does reflect a dip, it's because of the intentional one-time-only startup and the shifting of the funding to the school level. It's not a retreat from the importance of school culture and climate. Next slide, please. And also, another word on technology. You saw on a previous slide, although technology didn't emerge as one of the pillars from, I mean, one of the explicit Big Six pillars that came from the community groups, it certainly was implied in all of that feedback. I mean, it's kind of a given, I think, and should be considered a given, that we need to have requisite technology so the children can learn in our modern day and age at their school building, at their home, at a coffee shop, they have the tools they need to participate in the educational environment like they will once they're in the workforce of a totally-connected way. And that's taking continued investments in our technology. And also keeping them safe from various cyber threats that are very real, particularly with younger people. Next one, please. A word on funded enrollment. We have essentially held flat, and you see the four-year totals there. We have had a little bit of a dip, and we always, we always report our enrollment numbers. This is actually quite significant with, as compared to what an awful lot of other districts are seeing. Just the other day, there was a big piece in the New York Times about school districts nationwide having significant dips in student enrollment. We have not seen that. We have a minor dip, a very minor dip. It's almost negligible. And of course, the reason that enrollment is so important is important for many reasons, but our funding- but our funding, as you know, is based on enrollment. So it's important just because we want to make sure that our schools attract as many people as possible and have strong, vibrant, and growing school communities. And it's also a function of exactly how we're funded from, from the state and the city. Next slide, please. Now, our total revenue in FY23, showing the increase, we're, we're at 1.359 billion in general funds, 209 million in restricted, and 51.9, just under 52 million in our enterprise fund, which is essential, which is the fund we use to provide meal service to, to our kids at the 160-some-odd locations. This 1.62 million number represents a 16% increase from last year. And that's, again, all funding sources, general, restricted, and enterprise. Next slide, please. And as I think this group knows very well, oh, unlike Mr. Seneme, who talked a lot about his revenue sources and how they can vary, and you can have, you know, dips and peaks and valleys, we benefit from two main funders, the state of Maryland and the city of Baltimore. And, and those numbers are legally established in advance, so there is almost never any, any surprises once a budget is passed. And so the state of Maryland, in this FY23 budget, has funded us at $1,016,000. And the city of Baltimore is at the 313 million dollar level, which is a significant increase from FY22, for which we're very grateful. And also, the, the 309 is a general fund number, and the 4 million is a restricted fund for, it comes in for the Transitional Supplemental Instructional Grant, but it hits the 313 number that Mr. Seneme talked about. And then we have, and those, those two funders, that's 98% of our funding right there. And all, all the other things come in at 34 million, bringing us up to our 1359 billion number. Next slide, please. In a decentralized system like we have, we very much focus on the amount of money that is sent to schools or controlled by schools. That's where the children are, that's where the instruction is, that's where the money needs to get spent. This, we do this pie chart every year specifically to keep our eyes on it and also to show it to stakeholders and funders. Seventy-three percent of our general fund budget goes, goes to schools kind of just right out the gate, so to speak. Thirteen percent of it is budgeted centrally, but it really is spent on behalf of the children. That is, transportation services, utilities, things that are, I mean, an individual school, as much autonomy as a principal, a building principal has, they don't want to have utilities contracts all themselves. They don't want to, you know, hire one and a half buses for their schools. So there's a whole host of, of things provided at the central office that are done on behalf of the schools. So when we add up those two categories, about 87% of the funds go directly to schools or are controlled by schools. And, and the others are things like fringe benefits that can't be distributed evenly. Debt service paying on our bonds and with, for the 21st Century Program. And about 5%, we were at 6% last year, and I think we were as high as 7% in recent memory. The central office is now at about 5%. And we do, as I say, keep eyes on that. With Kerwin continuing to send money to the school level, this is, I think we're in good shape to make sure that we continue to spend money where it should be spent. Next slide, please. Now, I can, I, I think I'm, I'm probably pretty close to done. These are in, in the printouts, but these are just year-on-year increases. I don't, I don't think it's worth going through each category, but it does show both by object and by category in the next slide that we've gone up, depending on whether it's all funds or general funds, in the neighborhood of 15 to 18%. And those are, those are spectacular increases. And we are very, very happy that the promise of Kerwin is now coming through. A lot of us have been advocating for it. A lot of us in this room have been advocating, advocating for it. And we're very pleased to be now at the beginning of seeing the fruits of that advocacy. And I think you can go all the way to the last slide. Thank you very much. And this, this is just the literal manifestation of what I mentioned earlier about the Kerwin numbers. They're significant numbers. They come in different categories. And so this is something that, that will have implications as we implement. And there's a foundational category, which is fairly straightforward. I won't go through every one, but the college and career readiness, I said it was a modest amount of money, and it's, it's that number that's just under 900,000, which is relatively modest for a district of our size. There's English learners at 67 million, special education at 83. So these are the categories that are, that exist when we hear about categorical funding. So the numbers are increased, the categories are increased, and we're very, very excited about how this is going to hit our FY23, which starts on July 1st. And we appreciate your time, and we will also be back on June 2nd for, for even more.
Thank you very much, colleagues.
Just a statement, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman President Middleton, then Councilwoman Burnett.
So I guess the first statement, I'm so glad that you're, you have a team that's concentrated with homelessness with, for our teens and so on. That's so important right now because we have, you know, we know our city has a number of marginalized communities and a lot of runaway teens and so on with issues. So, so happy you're addressing that. And also, you know, the enrichment with clubs and so on. And I think the last time Dr. Santelisa was here, I mentioned that I think with these clubs, it's important to try to have the partnerships with some of the state national organizations like Health Occupation of America, Business Leaders of America, because they, years ago, the city did have partnerships and went for national competitions. And that was really a good highlight for Baltimore City.
What was that first group you mentioned, ma'am?
Business Leaders of America.
Business Leaders, thank you.
And I guess lastly, one of my, I guess, new peeps now is the importance of financial literacy. And I know the surrounding counties have really put money into separate courses for staff in teaching financial literacy, literacy, things. Since we are preparing our students for a life after high school, whether they're going to college or apprenticeship or any kind of career focus, I think in high school, there needs to be a coursework on financial literacy. They should, they should have a savings account when they leave high school. Just the simple things, how to, you know, now it's a lot of online banking. Those are very important for our young people to know how to do those things when they leave high school. A number of them are going to go into debt going to college and so on. They need to know the makeup of a check, their first check that they're going to get, and how, you know, some of the, the taxes, the state taxes. They leave and do not know any of these things. And this is just very important for, I think, every high schooler that leaves our city school system. So just something to keep in mind that I'm personally going to just keep tracking and bringing up the importance of it. It's an independent living skill that seems to have been lost because of, over many years of dysfunctional families that we have that just do not teach those things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The first question I had, you mentioned an increase in investment for athletic activities. Does that include facilities as well? Or is that operations only?
These, these numbers do not include any potential additional facility-related increases, no.
And who can I speak to, I guess, specifically about that? I've had a, a number of constituents raise concerns about safety conditions at the track at Emerson Westside High School, both for the athletes that are students at Emerson High School, but obviously there are instances where, you know, other schools, other young people may be using it, community are using it, and there are some very serious safety hazards at this point, given the conditions. And so I guess we could, we could talk offline, or if you could connect me with somebody that could speak to what the process would be to having those safety measures addressed, safety concerns addressed.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. I will make sure to, to do just that.
Okay. The second question I had, what is the budget for restorative practices for the district?
I do not know the budget amount for restorative practices. I can find that out by the end of the day tomorrow, though, and, and get it to you.
Okay. That'd be helpful, and the number of, of schools within the district that are currently deploying those practices would be helpful as well.
Okay, the number of schools.
That are, that are utilizing.
Utilizing restorative practices.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm looking at Slide 25. I think in the last briefing, I had seen different numbers for the food services and school lunches. It was a lot lower than this, and I'm really pleased to see that the, the almost doubling from '21 to '22 is pretty much staying in '23. Am I reading?
Councilwoman, can you hang on?
Yeah. I don't know whose music that is.
Me neither. Is that yours?
No.
No.
That's outside.
Yes.
Very good.
That's pretty loud.
Please continue. Thank you.
Sure. So my, so food services, the school lunches, and all of the above, that would be school lunch services, right? Because I think in the la, in last, and I'm sorry I don't have it in front of me, the last presentation we got from you, it was only like 11 million.
Yes, ma'am, I, I think I can address that. And what you saw was actuals. So what you saw was actuals, FY22 actuals through the end of the third quarter. Here, on Slide 25, you saw the FY22 adopted budget, which was estimating 46 million. Is that right, the one you're looking at?
Yes, uh-huh.
And so that was, that was the, that was the number that was in the FY22 adopted budget, but the actuals are not coming close to that. So this is showing budget to budget. And what you saw were the much lower actuals to date.
And why, what's the explanation for how low it was?
I think the explanation is that when the FY22 budget was made, it wasn't clear when we, when we would be returning to in, in school, in-school education with, with kids at meal sites. And hence, the 46 million was, was what was estimated. But keeping the kids out of the school buildings for longer than anticipated, at least with regard to that budget generation process, is what's led to the lower actuals.
Right, because we budget it based on reimbursement, right?
Yes.
And so what's actually being consumed as opposed to... And so why is the number high again for '23? Are you, we anticipating?
Well, we are genuinely anticipating in '23, like, like the increase in meals that we've had from the beginning of the year, that with kids back in the buildings, we think we're going to have in FY23, a quote "normal-ish" year with regard to the number of meals served. We, for example, when, when we last spoke, I had mentioned that we had recently passed the 9 million meal mark. And whereas in FY21, we were at 4 and 1/2 million. Right, and, and now we're above 10 million. We think that, knock on wood, we think that we will have in FY23 a year like a pre-COVID year. And that's why we budgeted that.
Yeah, but, okay, I see what you're saying. So it's not, but this isn't us supplementing that at all? This is purely reimbursement?
Yes. Well, looking in the FY23 budget, we, we're thinking that this will be based on USDA food reimbursement and doesn't include any loss that we might have to make up. So this is what USDA would reimburse us for, which is in, in our historical, in our historical band.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I was looking at the arts. I'm glad to see that. I've been visiting a lot of schools, and a lot of young people have been talking about arts. But I want to kind of bring up music because Margaret Brent has a great jazz band that are young people. So are we going to make sure, do the arts cover some of, some music also? Because that's very important also.
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, one of the big, one of the big subcomponents in the arts funding is significantly increased spending on musical instruments. Both in FY22 and in FY23, we're purchasing for students a massive increase in instruments, both band instruments and other types of instruments, in a way that we haven't had the ability to do previously.
Well, that, I know you talk about arts. Will that be in all schools, or you're kind of rolling out as a pilot?
All schools will have increased arts funding.
Okay. But I'm talking about, will that part of the music piece, too, in all the schools?
And, and music is certainly.
So it's going to cover on that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, anyone else? All right, we are now in recess and can go enjoy the concert. Taxpayers' Night starts at 6:00 PM this evening. We're now in recess.